I'm calling the February meeting of the AMSA Board of Trustees to order at 6:35. The meeting is being videotaped. First, we'll just review the agenda. We've got minutes. Did you send us both?
Yes.
Okay, it's both the December and January minutes. I don't have mine, so we'll take a look at those. We've got our rep updates. We have our ED report with our new ED. And then we'll go through task force updates and then committee updates, except for climate and special ed because Rick and Allison are both out sick. And then we will go into executive session where we're going to be talking about pending litigation and strategies for negotiating with represented and nonrepresented personnel. And we will come back out into open session. Okay. All right, so with that, any changes to the agenda? Anything anyone wants to add? All right, can we take a look at the minutes? Any questions? December ones in particular, look at them because we only had two people. If there are no changes to the minutes, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
Is this just the December minutes?
December only? Yep. Usually. And just think, one month, we'll actually get these minutes out like in plenty of time when we don't have a whole bunch of other things going on. Thank you. Okay, if there are no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the December minutes. Lucy makes a motion.
I second the motion.
Tom seconds. All in favor?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, are we doing both?
December only?
December only, okay.
Yep, December. All in favor?
Do I have to abstain? I wasn't there.
No, it doesn't matter. You can.
You can. Motion passes unanimously. Or did you abstain?
I was going to abstain, yeah.
Okay, Tom abstained. Tom, T. And then we can look at the January minutes. Are there any comments or questions on the January minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Chris make a motion. Liz seconded. All in favor? Okay, January meeting minutes are approved as well. Thank you. We'll go to public comment. We have three people. Sandy Mindersma.
I'm reading this from my phone. I emailed a copy of it to the Board of Trustees and to Sarah as well. My name is Sandy Mindersma, and I'm the parent of a ninth grade student. To the Board of Trustees, I want to publicly thank and commend you for choosing Dr. Lewis to be our interim executive director. Although neither of my children has ever had him as a teacher, he has embodied the spirit of AMSA, at least in my mind, ever since I first encountered you at an open house with my then fifth grade student nine years ago. I peeked into the classroom outside the lower school cafeteria, and I heard Dr. Lewis speak. "I respect the students," he said, "and I show that respect by giving them my best effort every day, and I show my best effort by making sure that I am prepared every day." It was a refreshing attitude for public schools, and it sold me on AMSA, and I've been delighted ever since. I'm delighted to see that the Board of Trustees has decided to put its trust in one of its own. To Dr. Lewis, to you I say thank you for stepping up. You have my support, respect, and gratitude. Thank you.
Jessica Bowen. Please keep your comments short.
She's a little personal.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Good evening, everyone. I'll try and keep it short, Pauline. I, when I heard the news that Dr. Lewis had been appointed as our acting ED, I posted something on the AMSA Facebook chat page, and it was extremely popular, I have to say. Not to stretch this out, Pauline, but it might be my most popular post ever. But I really feel it from the heart, and I thought it was worth putting it out in the public. I know not everybody is on Facebook, and I wanted the board to hear this and Dr. Lewis as well. So on the page when the announcement came out, people were saying, "Why didn't the board make Dr. Lewis the permanent ED?" So this is what I wrote. "I've seen many people wondering on their posts why the board didn't appoint Dr. Lewis the permanent ED. I have no inside information on this, but I'm wondering if it wasn't the board who made that decision but Dr. Lewis himself. We should take a minute to think about this from his point of view. He is someone who loves to teach. Why would he trade a job that he loves for a job that he has seen chew up a parade of people? If we really want Dr. Lewis to be a successful long-term leader at AMSA, it is imperative that we support him. We need to demand less of ourselves, we need to demand less of him and more of ourselves. We need to support policies and decisions rather than squabbling about our own personal inconveniences. We need to obey rules and accept consequences for breaking these rules with grace. We need to volunteer for committees, for dances. We need to attend PTO meetings and board meetings, and we need to come together and show the board and Dr. Lewis how committed each one of us are to the success of this institution, and then maybe he will want to stay and lead us." And everybody would win. So as someone who has worked in the history department since my first day here, I was hired by Dr. Lewis, I am blessed to be part of this organization. I owe my career here at AMSA to him, and I can't think that there's a better choice, and I will do literally whatever you ask me to make this work.
Okay, from now on, we need tissues at the podium. Monique Brown.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monique Brown, and I have a disclaimer. I'm a Dr. Lewis fan too, as my son Ian, class of 2016, had him as a homeroom teacher. So I have nothing but positive things to say, and I'm glowing. I'm very, very happy to see that you have selected him as the interim ED. But I'm here to talk about FAME. FAME is the Friends of Art and Music Education at AMSA, which I am a proud member. And FAME is a registered charitable organization. It consists of a group of AMSA parents whose primary goals at this point in time are to, one, advocate for expanded and better quality instrumental music programs at AMSA. Two, support all art and music teachers and events, especially arts nights, with fundraising and volunteer staffing. We believe that AMSA, an outstanding math and science school, deserves music programs on par with other quality math and science schools in the country. For example, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, which has 1,200 students, two full-time music teachers. Their curriculum includes advanced orchestra, philharmonic, advanced orchestra symphonic, AP music theory, symphonic band, symphonic wind ensemble, and regular band. Also on par with Bronx Science, which has 3,000 students, four-time music teachers. I won't list all of the classes, but the one closest to us is Abbey Kelly. Their charter states that the mission of Abbey Kelly Foster Charter Public is to assist parents in their role as primary educators of their children by providing a classical liberal arts education grounded in the great works of Western civilization and aimed at academic excellence, musical competence, and character formation. Their faculty includes five full-time middle and high school music teachers, presenting two concerts per year, as well as graduations and other events. We feel that music education is beneficial for all students, especially math and science students. This has been well-studied, but we will highlight a few data points. One, the College Entriq Examination Board has found that students involved in music and music appreciation score 63% higher on verbal and 44 points higher in math than students with no arts participation. The U.S. Department of Education has shown that students who report consistently high levels of involvement in instrumental music during middle and high school show significantly higher levels of mathematics proficiency by grade 12. The former U.S. Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan, once defined in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that arts are core subjects and as such play a significant role in children's development and learning process. To these ends, we have been meeting regularly with AMSA administrations since 2012. Initially, FAME members brought gifted 15-year veteran band teacher William Brison onboard to restart the AMSA jazz band. It was understood that the band program would begin initially as a club and then become part of the school day's elective class offerings, just as Chorus is now. Then Principal Jay Sweeney was enthusiastic about starting a pep band to play at AMSA sports events in addition to a jazz band. Since then, administration support for instrumental music at AMSA has wavered and declined. FAME is now very deeply concerned about the school's commitment to instrumental music. The main issues we advocate for have not been resolved or addressed concretely. Moreover, FAME feels that it was misled by the former executive director. We wish to put two important questions to the Board of Trustees. Number one, why has no progress been made toward making some form of instrumental music a half-credit elective? Number two, why has AMSA only hired one part-time retired teacher? Upon retirement of William Brison, the current teacher is, we fear, not a good match for AMSA. We are very concerned about the current jazz band teacher, especially poor communication skills and lack of energy to expand the band. The current situation is especially frustrating since upon Mr. Brison's resignation in June 2016, FAME again brought a well-qualified young and enthusiastic teacher to the school. This candidate was offered an annual salary of $5,000, much lower than Mr. Brison's salary. She had to refuse on financial grounds. This salary offer was also considerably lower than the $9,000 collected from parents' activity fees for jazz band. Accordingly, we are extremely concerned that instead of making a commitment to instrumental music by hiring the good teacher our school deserves, AMSA made money from parents. Furthermore, in the charter, it is deemed good hiring practice for art and music teachers to hold a master class before AMSA evaluators, and that's on page 38 of the charter. AMSA has no certified music teachers on staff, but some FAME members are certified music educators. These qualified, practicing music professionals had hoped to conduct evaluations for the school and are still ready and willing to volunteer to do so. While FAME recognizes that jazz band is now a club and not yet a full class, good hiring protocols were not followed to the school's detriment. We believe a better decision could have been made and should have been made. 10% attrition of band members during the first month of the new teacher's tenure, failure to attract new members, and inability to expand performance opportunities and grow the band are factors we fear will kill the program. Moreover, although music is specifically mentioned in the charter, the former executive director stated to FAME members that it is not, and because it is not, made no effort to accommodate instrumental music as more than a Tuesday afternoon club. We feel that AMSA deserves better. AMSA deserves a full instrumental music program, and FAME fully believes that this will happen. We can seize the opportunity now to make a strong program or let someone else take the reins in the future. We know that one way or another, with the help of this administration or another, instrumental music will be strong at AMSA, and our students will receive the benefit of a well-rounded education, as do students in other top math and science schools. We ask the Board of Trustees not just to assist in rectifying the mistakes of the past ED, but to help our students to achieve the very best they can in instrumental music. Specifically, we would like the AMSA administration to, one, hire a two-thirds or full-time certified music teacher to teach instrumental music, instrumental ensemble music to all grades. Number two, hire this teacher using good protocols, specifically teaching a master class. FAME music teacher members are happy to assist this process. Number three, offer instrumental music ensemble as a half-credit class during the school day like Chorus. Number four, actively promote and grow the band by expanding performance opportunities for school functions. A growing music program needs a growing and energetic teacher. We hope AMSA will shortly hire a full-time certified instrumental music teacher of high ability and vision. It is what our children deserve. Respectfully submitted, FAME. And I also have here, and I believe we have copies for everyone, I have selected and annotated timeline of FAME at AMSA that shows from June 2012 our interactions with administration through January 2017. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You'll leave that with Sarah so that she can distribute for us? Thank you. All right, let's move on to the faculty representative update.
Hey, Tom.
It'd be hard to follow up on some of the things that have been said earlier from different public speakers. I'll just focus on the faculty's reaction to events of the past couple of weeks. First of all, the faculty wants me to relay, and I mean this sense of every department, every building, old or young faculty, they were asking me to relay their thanks to the board, not only for the decisive integrity of its actions, but also for what may seem like small gestures, such as having board members show up on that Tuesday where it was announced to the faculty, that the number of board members who came to directly, you know, to speak to or to at least share that moment with those who were here at AMSA was something that touched people personally. It's not happened before, and they were very grateful for that. They are extraordinarily happy that someone that they know, know well and know well to love this school and to genuinely cherish its mission, and knows how to engage with people in a way that sees them as colleagues, as brothers and sisters in the same cause rather than as elements of a simple organization. The reaction, I would say, is one of genuine optimism. Some people qualify it saying, "Well, I'll be cautious that this is AMSA and it has a history." But I heard no one speak in terms of pessimism or dismay or unhappiness. Some of the new teachers were saying, "Well, I don't know what's going on, but maybe you can tell me." And those who were more than a few months here were looking at the school and its future in a new way, a new light, and they said, "Whatever you do, make sure that they, the board, and anyone here today understands that it is something that they cherish and they value." In terms of our own work, there's a realization that there's a lot of problems that we've inherited and need to fix, so that next year, there's no need to be continuing unhappiness at problems that come from a schedule or different ways that administration interacts with faculty that were not necessarily for the best, and that faculty realizes it has to now prove itself. It has to stop just pointing out what needs to be fixed and start, now that it has space for it, to help be part of the solution. And the number of different people have come to me and said, "What can I do to make a difference? Is there a committee I can join? Is there a group I can work with? Is there a particular area of AMSA that needs to have a resolution, a resolution fast, and maybe I have expertise for it?" This wishing to volunteer and be a part of it is something that I've never seen to this extent before at AMSA, ever, and it's kind of heartwarming. It's also heartwarming to see that it's not just a core veteran group that is speaking this way, but many of the younger teachers are also seeing this this way. And so we're looking forward to hope, we know, looking forward with hope to what comes ahead, but also the realization that we now actually have to take advantage of this opportunity to make the real difference for the school going forward. And for the first time ever in my very short career here, I was not told to convey any complaint whatsoever.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tom?
Don't worry, it's next month.
Yes, I'll enjoy the moment.
All right, Liz?
Same thing, and actually, I'll thank Jess and Sandy because you guys pretty much summed it up from what I've been hearing. The biggest outstanding question or issue around everything that's transpired over the last few weeks is really the question around why is Dr. Lewis not a permanent replacement, to which, you know, we've basically stated that there are no current plans to initiate a search, but, you know, the board is going to be focused on the strategic plan over the next few months. So that's really, that sums it up for where we are right now, and I would say that you have the overwhelming support of the parents from everything I've heard. I can't say it's 100% because I haven't talked to all of them, but it's certainly overwhelming positive support for you and your new world. So thank you for taking it on.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Liz? Did you get any complaints?
No, I did not.
All right, so let's move on to our ED report.
Okay, thank you all very much. I very much appreciate the support. So sincerely, last week I had the opportunity to speak to the staff for the first time, and I just thought it would be useful to reiterate what I said there, since they, we went over kind of my philosophy and just a couple really important goals and things that I think were going to be focusing on. So forgive me, I have a prepared speech here. Try not to be too boring, but I just wanted to make sure that I hit all the basic points so it can be clear. I think above all else, a fundamental priority is to create a school and a community where every, excuse me, every teacher, every administrator, every student, and every parent feels respected and listened to. So I'm very much committed to doing that, and we're going to be restarting the executive director advisory council as a mechanism to provide feedback, and not one-way feedback, but two-way feedback. I'm also very much committed to getting out of the office that is in the lower school. I think I referred to it as kryptonite when we spoke to the staff. I think it's just really important that everybody sees that there's, the walls that have separated teachers from administrators need to be torn down. And everybody sees, all of us, as working as a team together towards a common goal. So I'm very much committed to doing that and to not being close to the kryptonite. It's also very important that we build a school that permits growth, a school, community where there's room to make mistakes, where teachers and administrators and everybody knows that it's okay to make a mistake because someone is going to get you back up off the floor and help you. Tom has been incredibly helpful to me on so many levels, and several days ago, we discussed what his vision of the school was, and he mentioned how he was interested in creating a school of mutual enlightenment, a place not only where students learn and students create and students explore, but a place where teachers and administrators create and administrators explore and administrators try new things. So that very much is an important goal that I think we all share. I know that I don't have the answers to many, many things. That's probably the one certain thing that I can say. But I do know that working collaboratively, working together as a team, that we do have the answers. We have absolutely positively everything we need at this school to make this school the best school in the state, the best school in the nation. We have amazing teachers. We have amazing administrators. We need to come together and work as a team, and if we do that, nothing is going to get in our way. So in terms of some of the commitments that I really, really want to focus on, one very, very important commitment that I mentioned when we met last week is teacher retention. And I want to be very, very clear, teacher turnover is not good. It's not good for the morale of teachers. It is not good for our students. We need to dedicate ourselves to making sure that the teachers that we have feel respected, that they feel that this is a place that they can grow, and that this is a place that they wish to stay. We want to be known as a school not that bleeds teachers out, but that attracts teachers here. Secondly, as, and all of these goals are interrelated, to help keep teachers, it's very important that we have a terrific schedule in place, and the schedule has been one of the more difficult issues that all of difficult issues that all of us, particularly the teachers, had to confront this year. So, we are going to bend heaven and earth to make sure that we have a fantastic schedule in place. And to do that, we're clearing away a lot of the obstacles that have been put into place. We're moving to an eight-day rotation from a six-day rotation, we're removing the fixed department period from the schedule, and we're going to go back to what we did for many, many years, which was mixing lower school students with upper school students. That is going to have a very big role to help us create the schedule that we need to have. And just to give you a little bit of an update, we've already begun the process of establishing a timeline for completing the schedule, for getting a draft of the schedule into teachers' hands. We've set a goal of June 1st as the time, and you can hang my head and hold me to that. I'm perfectly happy to have that happen, June 1st. And what I'm most excited about is the fact that we have an in-house team of people, such as Padmeja over there, who are top-notch experts in how to build programs, how to run programs, and Ellen, thank you, just an absolutely first-rate group of people who I have no doubt will be able to accomplish this goal and produce a great schedule. And also, what really excites me about the team that we've already brought together is I think it could be an example of what we can do at AMSA if we work together. If teachers and administrators work together towards a common goal, and this is such an important common goal, that schedule is our spinal cord. And we can show, right now, right off the bat, in the next few months, we can show through struggle, through difficulty, that we can do something very, very valuable, and we can do it together as comrades, as colleagues. The third important goal that I have, we have, is making AMSA a place of growth for teachers, and that means that we need to change professional development at AMSA. We've had, over the past year and a half or so, a policy that permitted teachers one day of professional development each year during the school year, and that didn't work. Teachers need opportunities to explore the content, to explore pedagogy, to grow and to learn, to ignite their passion and the love of the content that they teach. So, we're going to talk to teachers, we're going to survey teachers, we're going to reach out to the entire community and ask, what is the PD program that we can create that gives teachers that opportunity so that they feel that AMSA is a place where they can grow and learn, not just for a few months, but for five years, for 10 years, for 20 years. This is a place that is their home where they can teach. Last but not least, just what is my philosophy of education? I just have a fairly simple philosophy, and it's really summed up in the phrase, "High Expectations." Each and every single child who comes, each and every single child who comes to our school can learn. Each and every single child, regardless of what ZIPCO they live in, regardless of their ability, can succeed their expectations and can succeed our expectations. And all of us are committed to creating a school where that happens. Thank you.
Certainly, from the board's perspective, you have our full support. We are very committed to ensuring that we can contribute to the success of the school however possible as well, so you know that you can count on all of us in any way that you need help as well.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Just because you brought up the advisory council, are you going to continue with the coffees as well, the monthly?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Anything I can do to reach out and talk to us.
All right. Maybe we can work on-
That would be great.
-getting that scheduled for March, so.
That would be great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, we're moving on to chair business.
So, I have one question. So, I had a couple of parents ask about uniform policy, and they were just, they were, they were-
This is not a test, by the way.
The old softies now at the ED, so.
Yeah, so, I think it was more in the, there was a general sense that there's been a lot of churn in the uniform policy, you know, particularly over the last year. A great many parents have gone to expense to conform with the uniform policy, and, you know, there was sort of, there were questions about, is that going to continue? Is it going to go in a new direction? And so forth. And I'm not looking so much for an answer now, because you may not have considered, you probably have other things that are on your mind, but I would encourage you to try to clarify-
Yes, well, we have our terrific dean of students in the lower school, Ben Keeler, who is here, and Mr. Naraki, who is not here. Ben and Mike have already worked on, with Ellen as well, some, really, I think, useful, important clarifications to the uniform policy that I think will be most useful to parents and to students. They know much more about it than I do, but they have worked very, very hard. They know the uniform and the concerns that parents and students have, and I have full confidence that they will be able to put forth a policy that will solve many of the issues that have come up.
Thank you.
So, see, that was a good test, right? That was, all right. So, moving on to chair business, actually, as a first order of business, I want to thank someone who has helped the board a great deal, and he may not realize how much he has helped. About four years ago, three years ago, there was quite a lot of turmoil at the school. I know there has been during that whole time as well, but at that time in particular, there was a great deal of mistrust of the board in general. And one person started coming to our board meetings and videotaping them, and putting them out for public consumption on his own time, entirely volunteering, and he's come to basically every single board meeting in the intervening three years. And it's been so helpful from the board's perspective to make what we do transparent and to have it out for the community, to be able to see what it is that the board is actually trying to do, listen to our debates, the things that we think about, and the considerations of the decisions that are made. And so, I did want to publicly acknowledge, now we have Mike Finkel on board, who's, you know, a member of the staff, who will be doing this going forward, but I did absolutely want to publicly acknowledge, Stan Macassio, can you please come up? Because I really want to thank you, because you're incredible. We are just all in happy boots today, Eric. It's good. All right, let's move on to the tough stuff. Okay, the business of the business. Task force updates. We have a strategic planning task force?
And we've been unable to meet.
Okay, that's not a surprise.
Quick update, we appreciate that.
That was a very quick update. I just want to make a note here that the strategic planning task force is something that we agreed after the January planning meeting to put together this group to talk about what the mission is. We talked about it a little bit more in governance to get a little more clarity at the next level down. I haven't talked to you about this, but probably we would want the ED to be part of it, at least, you know, in bits and pieces, maybe not at every single meeting, but at least in key timeframes as you move forward. The other thing that we want to talk about is the idea of scheduling another strategic planning session to go through this. We raised this in January, whether people were willing to devote part of a Saturday morning in March. I have not had the opportunity yet to send around a doodle poll, but I am going to do that, and I just want to make, put that on everyone's radar screen, that we are going to try to schedule that. If we can't do it in March, we'll do it in April, but we'll try to work towards having another dedicated five or six hours of time. So, appreciate everyone's-
You think that'll be facilitated again?
We will ask Marcy to come back so we can have it facilitated, yep. Yeah, I think that was very helpful. I mean, unless people felt otherwise. Okay. Okay, regional issues, Ken?
So, not a whole lot to update. You may recall from previous meeting, I talked about that we had developed a list of issues for the school's consideration. This was, you know, basically a next step that we, that we felt could be taken, given the fact that the task force had gotten to a point of asking for but not getting participation by the administration and staff in this. And so, at that point, it was felt that the only, you know, course left was to, you know, put together this list. In light, and so, as a result, also recognize that many of these things were things the school might be able to take on now that we've recognized and articulated the issues to go ahead and forward them to the school because the school's administration was going to have to be largely responsible for implementing that, certainly not the board. I think at this point, given sort of where we are in so far, I'd like to reengage at some point with Dr. Lewis to see if that's sort of the best course still, or whether we might want to step back and take a new look at the task force. So, that's sort of where we are right now. Do we continue to go, in light of all the things that are going on in the school right now, maybe just continuing down the path of articulating the issues that the regional issues task force come up with, or maybe try to reengage with another, you know, sort of a broader study that would include members of the administration and staff, faculty rather. So, that's where, that's what I have to report.
So, it probably makes sense to reengage with the administration, at least initially, right? And then see-
So, I agree. You know, I think on some level, there's a lot of things that are going to cry out for attention, so I just, I want to acknowledge-
Yeah, prioritize. Okay.
Acknowledge that in all the priorities, you know, certainly, you know, teacher retention, the schedule and so forth, the professional development, the things that Dr. Lewis already talked about, are probably, you know, bigger priorities to sort of make sure that we make progress on.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll go move on to committee updates, governance first.
Okay. So, what each of you should have a hard copy of, I don't know, Tom, can I have a copy? A hard copy of is a sort of a proposal with regards to really sort of communication, improving board communication and alignment with the administration. And this really started out of a conversation we had in a recent executive session where we said, we really, as a board, need to have more insight into, one, some of our administrative hires, being able to be a resource from the standpoint of providing input, advice relative to some of the hiring positions that we make. And so, as a board, and we have pretty good representation, actually, I think it was the first time we had 100% participation of the board, and our remote policy has certainly helped that. In addition, we had Ms. Bandero, Ben Keeler, Tom, of course, who's on the governance committee. And so, we looked at it from a bit more of a holistic standpoint, and said, really, we want better insight, and one of the areas that that will come from is if we have better communication and better alignment with the administration and the faculty. And that very first one up there, because we didn't want to look at it from the perspective of administration, because the board is really about governance, and we don't want to fall into the line of sort of managing or micromanaging. So, we talked about that for a while, and what was recommended, and I think it was actually Pauline's suggestion, was that we have both the principal and the business manager as ex officio members of the board, which at that point would give us the ability, in addition to the ED, who's already an ex officio, but be able to have greater alignment, input here directly from the business manager and the principal relative to things that the board is interested in, what's happening at the school. And that would give us sort of that closeness that previously, most of our communication and information has come from the ED. So, we're looking to expand upon that. So, what you see there under number one is a recommendation to the board that we revise the bylaws to add those two positions as ex officio, and if the board then agrees with that, prior to the next meeting, Sarah would be drafting, agree to draft language for the, to revise the bylaws, and then at the next meeting, we would come and take a vote on the revised language of the bylaws to add those two members to the, as ex officio to the board. So, and feel free, anybody who is, any of the other committee members-
So, we would vote in April or in May?
I was actually thinking we would vote in March.
March.
March, I'm sorry. I lost them all. In March, so we vote at our next meeting.
Right.
Yeah, but we should discuss it here. I mean, this is a pretty controversial proposal, and it was pretty controversial when we talked about it in governance, too, so I, like, three actions.
Can you help me understand a little bit about why is it controversial?
Well, I think just from the standpoint, we need to have DSA approve it, assuming they would.
What's the real downside?
I think the wrestling match, the wrestling that we had to deal with, it was, you know, are we getting involved in management? And it was a long conversation about, you know, do we want to, you know, have input into hires? Well, we can't do that, that's not governance, and this was a way that we thought, and actually, and it was Pauline's insight, that it's routine in corporations that the top three officers are ex officio members of the board, they don't vote, but that gives us the visibility that we need, that we lacked so badly in the past. And without them having, you know, we're not, we're not managing them, we're not directing them-
We're not hiring and firing.
They're not reporting to us, we're not hiring and firing them, but they are part of the conversation, and as part of the conversation, we can know them, we can know what's going on, we can observe the interaction and form a war, and therefore, do a better job at what is our job, which is supervising.
Yeah, one way, one way to clarify this issue of governance versus operations would be, in the same way that there is a description of the job for the executive director in terms of that governance role, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't talk in the bylaws about all the duties that the executive director would have, but it does talk about it in terms of a governance way. You could do the same thing with the principal and business manager in terms of their role in supporting the board's governance. You know, so, you know, for example, you know, you could sit there and talk about organizational viability is one of the three things, one of the three governance responsibilities that we have. Part of organizational viability is the financial aspects of the health of the school. And so, therefore, talking in general terms about that governance role, you could do that. And therefore, for someone who had a question about, well, why are they an ex officio member, you sit there and say, here is the governance role that the principal plays, that the, that the business manager plays, that is apart from their management role, management duties and so forth. So, that might serve to clarify that.
Well, they're definitely compliance-related aspects of their job, right? Which is governance.
Well, so, you know, okay, so, I feel strongly, as I've expressed in the past, that, that while the executive director is our main interface, in carrying out our governance role, all the weight of that, those governance responsibilities don't just rest on the ED's shoulders. You take the principal out, you take the business manager out, you know, there are certain positions that if they are not operating well, if we haven't hired solid people into those positions, and I'm speaking in a general theoretical sense, not about the specific people that we have, I'm saying in a general sense, over the longer term, if we don't always have good people in those positions, then we're not going to be able to carry out those governance roles. The ED won't be able to carry out his management, his or her management roles either, but that's for the ED to determine. I think it's well within our governance responsibilities to insist that- I think it's well within our governance responsibilities to insist that, that, you know, they have a role in governance as well. So, I think there's a great solution.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I disagree. I think, I think we have the opportunity to interact with the principal through the Education Committee, we have the opportunity to interact with the Business Manager through the Finance Committee. I think it's unnecessary for them to be on the full board. I think we're reacting to a feeling that we were getting filtered information or something like that, and if that's the case, I think we have a responsibility to, you know, question the executive director at that point in time and take action if it's necessary. But I, I think we're presupposing that, that there's, there's a problem in communication and that these people should be here, and I think that's premature.
I, I find it surprising that someone who has been on the board as long as you are, have been, would, would describe that as presupposing, given the history that we have had.
And we're putting the history behind us and moving forward at this point in time, and I think that this is a solution to a problem that I don't believe exists at this point in time. Further, I believe we have mechanisms to get feedback from these people already, and as we have consistently talked about trying to push down a lot of the business of the board to the subcommittees, to the committees, that's, that's where I believe the interaction belongs. That's, that's my opinion. Obviously, you have a different one.
I don't sure, as far as if I'm really, am I allowed to speak openly about this? It's my employer. I do understand what Tom Tavern is saying, except I have lost confidence that the continued, you know, the history of these problems we've had through time, I do not believe they're just a happy, the unhappy accident of particular characters. I believe there is a structural component. You seem to put an awful lot of weight, the way things are currently structured, on relying on the word of one person. Then, yes, you can eventually surmise that there is an issue with that, then you can eventually react, and it's been consistently lagging, slow. Problems are made real before we start to solve them. Would it be that hard to have slight changes in structure, such as having principal and business manager be able to be communicated directly by the board? Is that such a major change, given the reward, that it might save huge amount of time in recognizing issues that do need to be addressed? And to actually have an AMSA where we are proactively solving problems before they become serious and damaging? How many times can we have the horse be lame before we have to say, do we shoot it? Or do we find a way to salvage it? How about as soon as it starts to be a bit hobbled, saying, hmm, okay, let's nip things in the bud? Insight, information can be enhanced by moves such as this. I guess I'm not seeing the downside, given the obvious downside of not doing things like this in the past.
So, I was just gonna say, for Brits, others, Wayan, Mike, Liz, Lucy?
So, I've switched sides on this. So, originally, when, I remember we first started talking about it, I was very supportive of it. I'm really more in Tom's camp right now. I, I think that, I feel like we're late to the dance on this one, you know, that, that this is something that because we did not have, we did not have this in place, that we were really restricted, we were really handcuffed. And so, the question that I want to ask is, could we, is there a way to, to create, to pass some type of, get approval to be able to do this? So, we have it in our back pocket, and we can just invoke it if something, if we wake up one day and Dr. Lewis is not in that role, or we, whatever happens, we find ourselves in a tricky situation, that we can invoke this policy that we actually have already solicited, we have this approved and it's available to us in our back pocket?
That's nice.
That's something that's kind of interesting to me, I would, I'd be very supportive of that, because I think it's something that was not available to us.
Yep.
But I have no interest, need, desire to, you know, put us into this type of mode right now, I don't think we need to do it. I feel like Dr. Lewis is telegraphing very specific messages to us around transparency and openness. I feel like the problems that this was intended, among, one of the problems we were trying to address, I think have gone away. But I'd like to have the authority to, to say that we have approval and that we can do that should something change down the road.
So, just to be clear, the bylaws, I mean, they are what they are, but we also have things in the bylaws that we don't use, like, right now, we do have in there the idea of there's a vacancy with the Executive Director of Development who reports directly to the board, and that's, that's, that's in the bylaws, and obviously, we don't have that person.
I mean, I like having that, I like having this toolbox of capabilities that are available to us when we need them, as opposed to inserting something that I'm just not sure, feels like another layer of management oversight.
I mean, it's interesting, Tom's point was not something that was discussed in governance, we did not consider that.
So, I would say, so I would say no to this, but yes to getting it approved so we have it available to us.
Part of my concern about having this sort of as an optional thing is, by the time we have to have something, we find a need to have this, this channel of communications, and we have to invoke this channel of communications, we've gone way down a path here. And I think history now has shown that having multiple views, the board in its governance role, having multiple channels into the health of the school, it would have been a useful thing. And I think that this puts that in place. And I'm sort of, you know, I think Tom articulated best, what's the downside of doing this? If we find, if we find that, you know, that this is somehow resulting in greater board interference in the management of it, then I think we, you can address that by clarifying through the bylaws that this ex officio capacity is really for a governance role, not management.
Just thinking out loud, another possible alternative might be to leave it to the discretion of the chair to extend an invite to those two particular positions, depending on the topic that's going to be discussed at that time, or if there's an interest in getting some additional or broader input beyond the ED.
That's true, yeah.
And just have it on almost an invite-only basis, as opposed to making it a permanent change.
Also, my question would be, is the business manager a dedicated member of the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and the principal is a dedicated member?
Of the Ed Committee.
Of the Ed Committee, so?
Yeah, they are.
Well, so, that would be, that is, has been the practice at times in the past, and there have been other times when that dedicated aspect has been interfered with, so.
Okay, so, we need to make sure that that is a dedicated, that they are dedicated members, I mean, that.
Well, maybe that's the bylaw change. I mean, you make the bylaw change to put those two positions in those committees, I mean, the committee piece could be worded.
Yeah, that was my thought.
To have those.
My other question would be, and maybe we ask Marcy this, what do other charter schools look like? Do they, I mean, do their boards?
So, the best practice is not to have any faculty or staff or parent reps, frankly, they're on the, we have always, yeah, that has always been the best practice, because the idea, best practice governance, is that people are not representing stakeholders, right?
Right.
And so, we have always chosen not to do that, obviously, and we thought it was important to have those voices represented. There are other charter schools that do have different structures, like they, I mean, is it Parker that has just a certain number of faculty who can actually be on the board? I'm pretty sure McCullough has their CFO as a member of the board, right? Yeah, so, they, I mean, different charter schools do it different ways.
You know, I'm approaching it from a, from a new position on the board, clearly, I've only been on the board for a few months, but I, I can't see the problem with it. I agree with Ken and with Tom, I think the more communication, the better, like Dr. Lewis is trying to break down the walls that was between administration and the faculty, the more we break it down, the better. It doesn't mean we have to get involved in the administrative decisions of the school, but I think the more communication, the better off we're going to be. Even if we don't think there's a problem right now, I just can't see what the, I don't see the downside at all.
So, I respect what Tom and Mike are saying, and I do see the temptation to get more involved than we should in the running this school, and I think that is something that we would need to be vigilant about. But I also do think that it's, that's a relatively small risk, and it's something that we can, we can deal with it, you know, we have to be conscientious, but we can, we can deal with that. And it's just that, you know, things, the history is so bad, and it's, you know, we're, I just think that that amount of visibility into actually being able to observe how those relationships are working in a room would help us tremendously in finding, in reacting in a more timely way when we're required to intervene.
I would, you know, if we do go forward with this, in whatever capacity that we do it, whether it's members of the board, members of the committee, what have you, I think a more detailed description of their governance role and carrying that ex officio role out would be helpful and clarifying for all concerned.
That's true, yeah.
That this is a governance activity, not, and, you know, in terms of, you know, again, the three things that we're responsible for, academic programs, success, faithfulness, the organizational viability, that their, their role in this ex officio, as ex officio members of the board, would be to, to support that governance role.
Different idea, is we could also require their attendance but not put them on the board.
I'm trying to see what, sort of the difference in the objective would be, if we wouldn't have to go through having the bylaws changed, the end result would still be the same, where we have them in attendance, is that your point?
But can they speak if they're not on the board?
No, yeah, no.
Can they actually speak and participate?
Only asked, yeah, only asked.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
There's a reason why we have a faculty rep, okay? And that faculty rep is a member of the board, as opposed to just somebody who we ask to attend. Because being on the board lends a certain gravitas to the faculty representative role that would not be there without that. Okay? I just happen to feel the same thing is true for our principal and business manager.
Yeah, so I was forgetting the rules of operating as a school.
Yeah, I was just thinking they can't speak.
A regular, a regular organization.
Yeah. Yes, Sarah? Yeah, Sarah, you can add.
I just wanted to tell you that in 2015, 2015 November, we actually made a request from an amendment where Dr. McCleary, the Bold of ED and EDD were removed as ex officio members, so they are not members. And so, if you're going to do something like this, you're going to have to.
Put them back in, yeah, yeah, we'll rehabilitate them.
You're going to have to do it anyway, and it's a quick turnover, but that's something to, you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm glad you said that, I was thinking.
That's right, Sarah sent that this afternoon.
So, we're not taking a vote today, but we did want some guidance in direction.
Yeah, I would suggest we kick it back to governance. I would say we kick this back to governance to discuss, because the, you know, we didn't consider the idea of having them, like, designated on the committees, that is worth it. I mean, Allison and Rick were very involved in that discussion, and they can't be here today, so.
Yep.
And I think they just want to have their voices as well.
Yeah.
Was the Governance Committee unanimous in support of that?
Yeah, but we didn't think about every, you know.
Okay. I'm going to move rather quickly through the next three, so I don't use up too much time here. But what you see on the, on the screen was really collective input, I got to mention, Jess Bowen also joined us, too. And so, again, under this sort of heading of taking a holistic approach for improved communications and alignment, that number two up there, we talked a little bit about sort of having a cultural philosophy relative, about AMSA, to make sure that we've got alignment with our leadership in the board. And as we began to talk about that from the standpoint of sort of values, respect, those types of, that type of kind of criteria, and as we talked about it, Chris then pulled up the Statement of Guiding Principles, which we actually began working on, I think, almost a year ago or so, which is probably about 80% complete, and as he read through that, he said, boy, that sounds like a lot of the kinds of things that we're talking about, to make sure when you think of AMSA, you know, this is the kind of school that we all should, that everyone should be on the same page relative philosophically on, when we think about AMSA, here's what we think about, being able to have open communication, being able to respect, one of those, a lot of the things, Dr. Lewis, that you mentioned earlier.
Collaboration, innovation, right?
Innovation, yep, yep. So, out of that, we evolved to the point of pretty much saying that the task force that came out of the strategic offsite that we had, which was really Liz, Chris, Lucy, and Tom.
And Andrew's now.
I don't know if you know this yet, Andrew, but talked about adding yourself there, too. But we would take sort of the, this Guiding Principles document and sort of roll that into the work that the task force is doing in preparation for our next strategy offsite session, which was focused a lot on the mission, but it really would evolve to a sort of one document. And part of the thought around that was also, was something that we could actually sort of post up around the school potentially, say, this is what AMSA's about, this is our cultural philosophy. So, that's where we ended on that one. The second, third one there, which was stakeholder engagement, was, was really a conversation with regards to how do we, as a board, get better connected with key stakeholders in the school? And one of the ways we talked about doing that was extending an invite for those stakeholders to come into the board, and actually, and initially, we talked about department chairs, and there are other stakeholder groups, too, but let's say, having those different stakeholder groups come to the board, and because we didn't want to be burdensome with asking department chairs necessarily to do a presentation to the board, but maybe just having, sort of having a standard set of questions that we would ask them. So, what you see up there are some of the questions that we quickly came up with, just a sort of frame, trying to get a sense of from that department chair, that key stakeholder, and there may be other things that, you know, we think about asking, too, but this would be just sort of the frame, you know, what do you take pride in at AMSA? Where do you find the most joy, whether it's in your work or in the school? If you thought about where you're at today, and then you look two, three, four years down the road, what would you see differently? What do you envision that would be better about what you're doing here at AMSA or in your classroom that doesn't exist today? And then, are there any obstacles that you think currently are standing in your path? So, that's what we sort of talked about there. And then, that last one, board.
And just to add in, the idea was really all stakeholders, so, you know, it wasn't just academic department chairs, but, you know, maybe student government, the PTO, the guidance, you know, same.
And deliberately, the idea of using these questions, and it could be these or they could be different, is instead of a kind of dog and pony show presentation that we're accustomed to, all right, guidance comes in, she stands there, she reads us some charts, we ask her some questions, she goes away. That's really not what's important, what's important is that there's a relationship forming, there's a discussion happening, and it lets us, again, be better informed, we have one more touch point with community.
Yep, with better alignment, yeah. And then, that last one there, relative to actually having board members sort of experience, you know, the AMSA experience in a classroom, and I think, Mike, your name was mentioned as having done that.
It's amazing. It is. It's just the great, I got to see Tom and I actually in the pajama, and it's just, it's really something. And, you know, you end up in conversations in the hallway with students, and so, I loved it.
So, what's the, the purpose of the policy? I guess I'm not understanding.
So, the discussion.
I mean, it's not allowing it to happen, because there's no prohibition on that now, is there?
No.
Is there an expectation of board members that they will?
Making it more of a routine.
No, no, actually, more the guardrails around it, like, what you're, you're not there to, to comment on the teachers.
Yeah.
You're not evaluating, you're not.
Right, we don't want to create a threatening environment, this is one of engagement and alignment, and so. So, myself and Roger Jarrett were the two who signed up for that one, and I know Roger So myself and Roger Jarrett were the two who signed up for that one, and I know Roger's already sent around a bunch of links, I think, maybe some other schools. We'll be working on that.
Good.
Okay. So that's about it. And that was primarily probably 90% of our Governance Committee.
Good work.
Thanks. Teamwork.
Great, thank you. Ed Committee?
So Education Committee met on January 12th in sort of anticipation and preparation for the Board's strategic planning meeting at the end of January. So we discussed various ways to engage with the Board in, in supporting its responsibilities in academic program success and faithfulness to charter, so it was a good discussion. We've also have since kicked off the self-assessment, Board doing, excuse me, the Committee, Education Committee, doing a self-assessment. So Liz put together a Survey Monkey survey that got sent out to the members of the Committee to complete, and we'll be putting those results together and then evaluating that as part of, as the Committee. And then, we didn't meet on February 9th, that already canceled the meeting, because it was in the evening, it ended up being sort of, it was going to get canceled anyway, because school was out that day, so, but we canceled that, and then, because of the vacations and the Board meeting schedule and so forth, we're just going to meet a regular, next meeting would be our regular meeting date on March 9th. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. And then, financing audit.
Yep. So we were scheduled to meet on Monday, and because of the weather, we did not meet on Monday. We're going to set up a meeting in March.
But we have financials.
We do have, we do have financials, we did not have an opportunity to go through on Monday, so I'm not going to go through those in detail at this point in time. We're also in the budget process at this point in time. It is possible that we will be discussing the 2000 and fiscal year 2018 budget at our March Finance Committee meeting and at the March Board meeting. At the very latest, we'll be discussing that at our April meeting, so we're moving forward on that, but obviously, there's other priorities out there and lots of moving pieces right now, so working our way through that.
So if anyone has questions on these financials, ask Tom separately. And fundraising and development.
So we've been sort of on hiatus since the reunion, and I do think it's time to pick it up again, because we had, and we did have this conversation, Maureen Evans and I, with Dr. McCleary last month, is that we had, so back in, I think it was October, when we discussed it, we said, "Well, what's our philosophy of having a surplus? What do we want to do with it? What do we want to do with the money? Let's get that squared away before we mount the annual campaign." So, lots has happened since then, and this whole strategic discussion also has bearing on that. We do need to make some decisions if we want to do an annual campaign this year. We really should start it by April. So, you know, we could, we could have the financial discussion at the March meeting, but I think by the March meeting, we've got to be ready to go ahead, and then we can reactivate the Committee, and we can do the, do the campaign in April to June timeframe. We had originally been trying to work it back, you know, we, over time, we drifted into the spring, we're trying to work it back into the fall, and we'll have a more natural time to have it, but that's a, that's a very secondary consideration, I think, given.
Can you remind me why that is? Why is, why is the fall better than the spring?
Traditional tax planning season.
Just, yeah.
Dressing up your taxes, you ask for the money.
In December.
Yeah. I think ideally, we were thinking.
People are in a Christmas giving mood.
Something to be, you know, something to be thankful for around the Thanksgiving timeframe, it's the wonderful experience your students have here at AMSA. And, oh, by the way, don't forget the tax consideration.
People give in the fall, for reasons, I know there's two, but is it the?
Too many people setting up for ski vacations this time of year.
So.
Well, I think we do need to kick off an annual giving campaign, for sure, right? We need to have one during the school year. Do we do it without this discussion on the reserves?
I think we're in such a different place now.
Exactly.
Like, I'm not having trouble thinking of a theme.
Okay.
And I think the atmosphere is one that would support.
Yeah.
And that the campaign could actually be a celebration of the new day.
Renewal. Have posters of Dr. Lewis around the school, put a dollar bill on it.
I think some people could have some fun with this. So if that's a sense of the board, then let's go.
Dunk tanks are very popular.
I'll do a dunk. I'll do that.
I would just add that we did, you know, we did budget for $40,000, because we're looking for.
There's that, too, yeah.
In the annual giving. And if we don't raise that, we're going to be fine for this year, but that was what the expectation was, based on brief.
I think we need to get it to happen. We need to do that.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we can go into executive session. Well, is there any other business for open session?
Are you taking agenda items for next meeting or two?
Sure, I'll take the agenda items.
No, I just, I was just getting clarification, Tom, I guess is.
I think there's a, I mean, that, our protocol says we get agenda topics, so I'm glad Ken reminded us of that.
Yeah.
I'd say we potentially are going to have the budget to discuss in March.
Okay.
I will let you know better in about two weeks' time.
Okay. Okay, other agenda topics? We want clarification of the budget, was the question?
No, no, I was just, I was just, for the rest of the Board to understand that it's budget time coming up, and that, that the March meeting or whenever it is that we're ready, we need to have all handles.
I encourage people to come to any Finance Committee meeting, because they're loads of fun. If, in fact, the March Finance Committee meeting is to review the budget, that will be in the public notice, and it'll be a long meeting, but that would be a good one to come.
Will we receive advance notice?
You will receive advance notice if we're going over the budget at the March meeting.
Okay, thank you.
If we're not, we're going to be dealing with it.
I mean, advance notice at the Committee meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there, is a meeting scheduled for March 13?
It hasn't been scheduled yet, but it's tentatively looking like March 13.
Okay, okay. All right. 13, 13.
One, three.
Yeah, okay.
I said that with confidence.
Good.
Well, I was just amazed that Pauline was actually asking about whether the meeting had been scheduled, and it's just February.
March 13, tentatively.
Tentatively, there you go, you've got a tentative, all right. All right, well, then, if there's no other specific agenda items, we can, we'll go into executive session, I will entertain a motion.
Some move?
I didn't even finish speaking, to discuss pending litigation and strategies for negotiation with represented and nonrepresented personnel.
Still some move.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, we need to roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, there we go, we're going in.
I'm coming back.
We are coming back out in open session, but I don't know how long it's going to be. And the other thing, as I just forgot to mention, we're also inviting Dr. Lewis, yes.
I'm allowed, not only for part.
You're allowed for part, and yes, Tom is allowed for part.
Yeah.
Yeah.